Relevant to assess of drawing units to be considered consistent with state law. You guys are invited to the meeting as the zoning board appeals. And also at their meeting on July, June 16, 2025, the planning board reviewed the potential zoning bylaw amendment suggesting by the board of appeals related to Appendix A, Table of Principles, Use Regulations, and decided to sponsor or co-sponsor the amendment for the October 2025 town meeting, special town meeting.
Okay.
Thanks, Benny. In light of the fact that Jimmy won't be here, Jeff, I'm going to seat you on both hearings today.
Okay.
First order of business is draft meeting minutes full Wednesday, April 16. Anybody have anything on those? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second set of meetings is May 21st, 2025. Anybody have anything on those? Hearing done. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I am going to turn the meeting over to Jay. He will proceed.
All right. First order of business, Dave, do you want to sit in for this two hearings? So... The first hearing will be Six Craig Circle, which is continuing from May 21st. So, Mr. Zerkel, come up.
My name is Michael. Did they call? And I'm here as a fellow on the previous meeting, which ended by requesting me to work with Eric, the building commissioner, to get the commissioner approval, which I did. He said he'll be here. He asked me to pick the temporary occupancy permit. And he said he would be here. And he's not here, so I really don't know if he's informed the board of the work that we did in the course of the last few weeks.
So, Mr. Chair, he decide, he did have notes that he did put in his, in the packet, and he decided not to come to the meeting as he wrote his notes, just to let you know.
So, you're right, we did get some correspondence from Eric referencing Six Craig Circle. And on the correspondence, it says, June 9th of this year, you apply for a billing permit for the front extension, which is in front of the ZBA. That permit was issued and closed on 6/13. The billing permit for the garage and master suite has been closed on 6/13. Then it says, he conducted a final inspection on 6/12 for the entire building under the family room edition, which is in our file. The front section, which was in front of the ZBA, was excavated and meets the ninth addition of the 78 CMR. And he issued a 30-day temporary occupancy permit that brings the housing compliance with 78 CMR. And then he said, you did comply with it in a timely manner with all the outstanding issues to receive the temporary order. So he gave you a 30-day temporary one for the occupancy permit. Do you have anything else to press the board on?
No, I just appreciate the learning process. So I'm thankful for the exercise going back and forth and learning what needs to be done and the right thing needs to be done. One thing I realized was that the extension, I thought I had a permit, but then...
Oh, sorry, was that my hearing story?
The front extension?
Yeah.
Yeah, when Henry, it was Henry exchange, he was, he approved it. But we didn't find that in our documents. So, I mean, the learning here is that you need to keep all the information that is required of you until the permits are closed. So, yeah, thank you for that.
All of them up to the board before we have any questions?
I just have a question from Sierra. There's an email that says, we still have not received these items we've been requesting for three months. We will be making the meeting packet for 6/18 this week. Did they get what they needed?
Exactly.
Um, I think they did.
If I remember correctly.
I guess, I'm assuming when I looked at that, that was dated June 10th. And when I'm looking at Eric's response, that's June 13th. So I'm assuming they got it, but I'm not sure. Maybe Jeff could use it.
Okay, I can speak on the building side. So Eric did get everything he requested from when he was at the meeting last meeting from Michael, but I don't know if Sierra got what she got. Because, but I think Jeff could maybe speak about that.
Sure, I'll do my best. So it's two separate issues. I think it's fair to say that the commissioner got everything that he needed for his part. I think Sierra was doing her job to try to make sure that the board had all the information that they needed to make informed decisions. So really, it really falls onto the board. Do you feel as though you have enough information to make informed decisions about the special permit? If you think you have enough information, then you could go forward and act on it. If you feel as though you need additional information, you could always request that information, especially if it relates to criteria. Like, do you think, in this case, is this proposal substantially more detrimental than, you know, the alternative? Is it more detrimental to the neighborhood? If you have enough information, then you're certain free to move forward.
So should we not worry about the information Sierra was looking to ascertain?
So that is, that is up to the board. Do you feel you have enough information to make informed decisions? Do you have what you need to evaluate the criteria? And the only one who can answer that is the board.
Jennifer, what, what information is Sierra looking for, Jeff?
If I recall, she was looking for justification of Eric's special permit criteria. Just as I think she did the original go around, which I think she, the board eventually got for the original hearing. So I guess it depends. Do you think you need more information than has been before you before? Or is there something more that you need to make that determination? You know, do you have the generic special permit criteria? And then also the finding that this would not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood?
Am I correct in understanding that the building commissioner has approved it based on what he has observed and what he has received?
He has approved the structure. He hasn't approved the setbacks.
Well, I'm not, then I'm confused.
We, I think we have to approve the setback. He's just approved that it's been built to code. Everything that's been built has been built to code.
Yeah, well, I think it's continued upon.
That's correct.
Approving, right. We would have to approve the special permit in order for that billing permit to be completed, correct, Jeff?
So right now, this board would have to grant the special permit relief in order for that occupancy permit to become permanent, mind you. Because right now, it's only temporary. And part of it hinges on whether or not that forward most addition gets to remain or not, which depends on the zoning board. So my opinion, the commissioner can't issue a final certificative occupancy until the setback issue is resolved. So it's two separate issues, as I think Scott called out. Maybe it wasn't Scott, someone else. There's building code, and there's the zoning board's purview of the special permit relief. The building commissioner is currently satisfied, provided that the zoning board grants the relief. If the relief is not granted, then there's still an outstanding issue, and they won't get final occupancy.
So I guess it appears to us that the last meeting, we had the billing inspector here. And it appears that the billing inspector is in agreement with that. He found, he needed, he got everything he has, except the only thing he wants to do is complete that billing permit till we provide that, that, either we make a decision on the yes or no on that, on that special permit. So it appears right now they have a 30-day temporary occupancy permit. So that's probably why it's a little more critical at this point.
I know one of the issues last time was the, you know, when it was on solid foundation, and Michael did, I saw the pictures from Eric. They dug it out.
Right.
He was happy with all that.
Yeah, he did mention that, right?
Yeah.
So I guess, I do...
So I have, Jeff, when I came into, I mean, when I put in the application, I tried to contact you, and then you walked me through. You told me exactly what the requirements are, and I made sure I submitted them. So I'm a little confused what, what is lacking right now. During the first meeting and then the second meeting, I realized that I didn't have the permit or it was inspected. There were stories that I believed I understood, okay? But right now, I don't really know what additional A documents we are asking for, because Jeff walked me through everything. And I have also applied for this before. So it was just a duplicate of what I've done in the past and change the date, and it makes sure it looks good. So I'm, I'm a little confused here.
So it's my understanding that you applied to this board for a variance before.
Yes.
Was it granted?
Yes.
You then took more.
Yes.
What was granted? You then need to come back and apply, of which we have not approved.
That, I understand. I'm saying that because of the initial application documents, when I came to Jeff, he presented to me what I need to, the required paperwork for the second application. So it was very easy for me to understand all the needs where. So I took the initial application information and then just put it on this current application. And when I came in, it didn't go through, and I knew why, and I understood why. But at this point, today's meeting, I really don't know what is the missing information. That's, that's what I'm trying to ask Jeff. What is it exactly that is not provided yet? Because it was just a...
I think only Sierra can speak to that.
Yeah, it was the first information I took, and then I put everything on it. Second one, I mean, from A to Z, the application, the fees, the appetities, and all, it was just a similar exercise.
So if I may, the most important criteria that the board would need to know is, do you believe this proposed addition on top of the other addition that was made with benefit of your relief, would this further bump out be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? If you think you can answer that question now, then I suggest you don't need additional information. If you're not sure, if there's additional bump out, you know, if that, you know, justified that to you, then you may need more information. But I, I think it's up to the board to say, do you have enough information to make the determination if this added addition is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as compared to the previously non-conforming section?
Are you here for this hearing, ma'am?
No.
Oh, okay.
No, I was just saying.
Okay. We didn't know if you were in a butter or whatnot.
Well, we were, yeah.
Does anybody... If, if he came before us for this variance now, or special permit, he would have to contact all his neighbors, go through the whole mailing list, give the people an opportunity, come up and find out if it is more detrimental to the neighborhood. If, if he came before us and asked for the relief that he's looking to give right now, he did that once already for his original bump up, right? Gave people the opportunity to come up and speak on his behalf or against it.
Yeah.
It's not happening this time, and he's encroached even further to the front yard.
I did, I did that.
We don't, we don't have that, we don't have that information.
No, and Jeff said I should go to the assessors office and get the appetities. I paid for it, I did all...
Then where is it?
I, I mean, I paid for all that.
Where is it? I understand, but where is it? It's not here for us. We usually get it, we get a list of abutters.
I submitted all that.
You might have done that the first time.
I did that, no, twice. I did that twice. So the current one was in it.
If I may, I'm sorry. The abutters were provided the same notification the second time around as the first time.
Especially if you're having a public hearing, wouldn't that have to happen, Jeff?
It did happen. Or we would have advised the board to not open it. So they were provided the notice, and either they decided to not offer comment, or they had, you know, presumably no concern, or they weren't concerned enough to write or attend. But they were provided the same notice. And again, ultimately, the real question for the board tonight is, can you make the determination? Do you have enough information to make the determination that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? If you feel you have enough information, that respectfully suggests you can move forward. If you feel that you need more information from the applicant to make that determination, then you need that information. So it's really up to the board. The abutters had their opportunity, they were given notice again. So it's, and I don't know if there is anyone there in the audience for this petition, so that's worth that. Does the board have enough information?
Does the board feel like they need additional information?
Nope, I don't. I'm still, I'm a bit confused and complex. So he has a temporary 30-day occupancy permit?
Yes.
Okay, if we decide we don't have enough information, if this gets bumped out to the next meeting, his occupancy permit expires.
Runs out.
Can, Jeff, can he? Can it be extended another 30 days?
If the zoning board would like us to request if the commissioner would extend it, we're happy to do that.
So the only reason I'm asking is because Sierra wants some information. She says she doesn't have it. If we continue a month, she could get her, hopefully she would get her info, and when you came back, we would know for certain she's happy, then we could make a decision. The only thing is, can Eric give him, extend that temporary occupancy permit? Because he's going to miss that 30-day window.
There may be others more qualified to answer that, but I believe it is, it is possible. He had discretion to issue it in the first place. It would be a finite amount of time. But it isn't about making me or Sierra or staff happy. Ultimately, it's the board's decision. If you feel you have enough information, if you feel you don't, then ask for what you need. If you, I've heard some feel that they maybe don't need more, but it's really up to the board. We try as gatekeepers to try to ensure that you get, you know, strong answers to the criteria. We aren't always as successful, but it's really about, do you have enough information to make that informed decision? And if you say you have enough information, then I don't imply delaying. If you feel you need information, then that's absolutely a reason.
But she starts her memo saying, "We still have not received these items we've been requesting for three months." What items?
What items? What items? That's my...
That's, that's the nub of this thing.
The Assessors' Property Record Card. And then regarding here, there's no appear to be addressed rather than... It's on page eight, the, you know, the document. The criteria does not appear to address rather than, rather than every line states no impact, not affected, except the, they should be redone to adequately address each criteria. I have attached a blank special permit criteria for your use. So she requested you to address each one of these items, so the board could have something in to do that. And that's what I think was the issue.
Let me see the items.
Yeah.
Which items? Assessors' Property Record Card.
What's that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so I went to the assessors' office. I requested everything that Jeff asked me to request for.
Yeah.
Okay, and I made a payment, and I stood there. They got everything handed over A to me. Then I requested for the, I mean, the deed, everything that was on the list. I didn't see a list. It was a list of about eight to 10 items.
Yeah.
Okay, so I got everything, and I came out, and I worked with Jeff. We checked it one by one, what it is that we, all got checked out. There was one page that I had to fill like, like the benefit it brings.
Yeah.
Okay, I had it on a previous application, so I just copied everything in word to word. Okay, so to the best of my A knowledge, I submitted everything, because I worked with Jeff, one by one, I take, I check every item. And it was one A morning I came in.
Just from, from this, it just seems like Sierra's been trying to ask for this information since then, and she hasn't received it. So from my perspective anyway, if we want to make a decision on this special permit, we should have all the information we need in order to make that decision. And that information, it sounds like to me, would address some of those issues that we would like to hear from you about that, so then we can make that decision. So I think if you can get, it sounds like there's a potential to extend the occupancy permit with the building inspector. At this point, I think the board might be more comfortable with that. I might be speaking for myself, but it sounds like the board needs to make sure that we have all the information in order for us to make a decision that we feel comfortable with. And some information is missing, and I think the board wants to have that right now. It sounds like we do have some, you've been very helpful in working with the billing inspector, and it looks like we've got pretty far ahead with that. It's just something that the board wants, and maybe I'm talking about myself, or do you guys?
I, I think I have an idea of what she's looking for. So this form you fill out on the...
Yes, yes.
Right.
Well, if, I'm taking a stab at this. You just answered each question where it says, "No impact."
Yes.
She wants you to elaborate.
Yeah.
They want you to elaborate on, actually take some time to write a nice response. Instead of, "Does not apply," you know?
No.
So I think that's, she wants you to take that form, expand on your, "There's no impact." Why is it no impact? I think that's what she's looking for.
Because if you said there's no impact...
That's right, I have a thing. "These should be redone to adequately address each criteria, not just state no impact, not affected."
Exactly.
That's exactly what it says.
So she needs that for a complete application. All right?
All right.
So if we have that, then we can go.
Okay.
So can you?
Absolutely, I can.
Sierra, right?
Yeah, yeah, I can, I can, I can. So is it just that page that we, it wasn't redone properly?
You'd have to talk with her, but I think that...
You obviously have to go back to the assessor and get the report card that you paid for, that you say you didn't get. Is that the other issue?
No, no, I got, I got everything, okay, all right. So I have to go to the assessors' office again, and I have to redo that page.
Sounds like it.
Jenny, could you maybe give him those two items that he just sort of knows what that, so he can address those?
Try and see.
So I think, you know, once you do that, you know, it could be done a lot of work. So...
To Jeff's point, so what would be the impact on the environment if this, I mean, really...
Now, remember, we're making a decision, right? That goes against the zoning, right? So we need to hear why you want to do that, and to refill that is justified. So it's going to help us make sure that this doesn't cause any substantial detriment to the neighborhood going to the town, so.
For me, Mr. Chair, it's still, you guys, this board granted him relief, and he ignored the relief and went above and beyond the relief. So it's not just granting, to me, it's not.
Well, we want to crush the keys and crush, I mean, I mean, crush the keys to talk to you.
Yeah, so, so I've been punished enough for that, so like I said...
I don't, I don't think you have.
Okay.
So... You know, why don't we just...
So let me summe this.
Yeah, can you please get that information for us?
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
And then we can go from there.
All right. Thank you.
So do I hear a motion to, so we'll continue this to next month's meeting?
Which is July 16th, July 16th, 2025.
So we're going to continue it to July 16th.
Is there any public comment?
One second, hold on, yeah. Is there any public comment, any for or against this? No, so there's none. So...
Seven, Mr. Chair, at 7:12.
At 7 o'clock, all right? So do I hear a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we need to add more to it. I do think we need to make a request to the building commissioner to extend the occupancy
Yeah.
until the continuance.
Yeah, could we communicate that to the billing inspector, that we needed a decision made, and that the board is in favor of approving the extension, if that's possible, I guess? We would, we'd be in favor, the board would be in favor of that, so.
We could, I could talk to the building commissioner. We can talk to the building commissioner on Friday.
Okay. So do I have a motion for that?
Soon.
We need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. All right, thank you.
Michael. Friday, 8:00.
Friday. I should come here.
If we on Friday, we'll close in the morning. Friday, 8:00. So give your heads up, and then Monday, 8:00 to 4:00, and then 6:30.
Gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone. So before I open the public hearing, I wanted to say, I want to disclose that I have an indirect connection to one of the speakers of this petition, but that I believe I can remain impartial in that it will not affect my decision-making. However, if anyone has an objection, I would be happy to refuse myself from the hearing. So is there anybody having to do that?
Nope.
So I'd like to have, the next one will be to open a public hearing notice for, let's see, to consider an application as indicated for a special permit pursuant to Section 3.6.6 of the Westford Zoning Bylaw for the reconstruction of a non-conforming residential structure with a front yard setback of 38.4, whereas 30.5 was previously approved... previously approved and fifty feet is required. Do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Yeah, yeah, he's... I nominated him for two. Thank you for that.
Try not to be harsh.
So...
Hi, gentlemen. Joe Catalo, M.J. Catalo. So we're doing the site work for Scott McKay at his future home on Four Snow Drive. We had pulled the building permit. I have a construction supervisor's license, so we're going to be the general contractor of the project. When we tore the house down, we then moved to dig the foundation. The foundation was laid out, and my excavator operator pulled one of the back stakes. He thought that he put it back in the right location, and come to find out that stake was off by a matter of twelve to fifteen inches. What then happened was the foundation contractor came out and he staked out the footings and poured the footings based on the two back offset lines, one which was skewed forward twelve to fifteen inches, causing the right-hand side of the foundation, I say, foundation footings to be, um... It's nine tenths of a foot, so it's approximately eleven inches closer to the roadway than it should be. So what we're asking for is a special permit to give us a after-the-fact variance to allow us to continue the construction. Totally a human error. We stopped... Once we knew that we had a issue, we stopped construction. We've talked to the building inspector, and Mr. McKay obviously has filed for the special permit. And happy to answer any other questions. So if you look at that picture with the orange dots, that's the foundation wall. So that's... In the picture, the plan, that's that bump out of the plan. That's part of the garage. So one corner is off by four inches, the other one's off by eleven inches. So what is the next picture, Benny? Oh, no, you had it right there. Sorry, yeah.
This one, right?
Yeah, that piece is sticking out beyond... That's the problem right there. So the moral of the story is, an excavator operator is not a great conveyor.
So it looks like it said a thirty-nine point five.
Thirty-eight point four.
One corner's thirty-four, the other's thirty-nine, yeah. Of course, the side yard on the left side and right side, there's plenty of room. The rear yard, I've got that covered also, so it's just this front. And that thirty-nine point five number came from a letter of determination from the planning department, because that was the front yard of the old house. And as long as I didn't encroach beyond the thirty-nine five, I wasn't going to have to come in front of this board to build this house. But my luck is not such, so...
Yeah, it looks like we got prior approval.
Yeah, yeah. There's a letter in there saying we had prior approval. Correct.
It appeared you're putting a lash there, right?
A lash, yeah. Pretty similar to the other houses in the neighborhood. Nothing big, yeah. Not a McMansion.
No McMansion.
Yep, no.
Oh, I want to see this deck. That's a two-story. Most of them are non-story.
Excuse me? Does any of the board have any question for it?
No, I'm good. Pretty straightforward.
Yep. So...
Mr. Chair, I just want to let you know, Health Department did comment on it, just to let you know, that it will require a floor plan that confirms to a septic designer a three-bedroom home, just to make sure that they know that septic has...
Gentlemen, there's presently an existing septic system, which we preserved. We've identified the location of it. It's in the back left-hand corner. So what we will do when the time comes... It has been required of the Board of Health to install a new septic tank, but the field itself, Mr. McKay had it tested before he began construction, and it... The septic field does meet Title V requirements, so we will install a new tank with baffle. So I will contact the Board of Health when that time comes. And we did submit a floor plan for them.
I just wanted to make sure.
So is there anyone in... All that people who'd like to speak to this, if you do, please come to the microphone, so you may address, please.
My name is Devan, and my address is Three Snow Drive.
Is...
And I'm right across the street. I'm sorry?
What's the address? I'm sorry?
Three Snow Drive.
Okay.
First of all, I don't understand the picture. I don't know what part is the foot bump, or the eleven inches bump. The second part is, um... There's a lot of beautiful space on either side. In fact, I saw Mr. McKay talk to both of the neighbors on the side of him, the Owens and the Culbers. The back is beautiful. However, I'm right there, and there's no picture where exactly where his driveway is going to be to my front door. And that's what I feel. I feel like there's a privacy barrier, and that's my concern, why I say no, because what do we... When you showed the picture of, "This is how you're going to landscape it, this is how everything," I felt that it... There's not a lot of space between the houses. And it's kind of like, um... Right behind my house, there's a little patch of conservation land, and the first house of Woodbury, or there's a... The first house in Woodbury is like right there. Well, I don't know who on Woodbury was cutting everything down. So I came to the town, and I said, "Yeah, I have a question." And I explained what it was, and the big burly guy said, "You don't want to go there." And I said, "Well, actually, I do." And even though that house is further away from me, I could tell you everything that's going on. Like, they didn't get their curtains or their shades in. One day, the mister, you know, went back to bed. I can tell you where the bedrooms are, who's in what bedroom, and this is all just from my kitchen window. And if I were in my living room, or my dining room, then I could tell that there's like... I can see the big screen TV and all of that. So for me, it's a privacy thing. And, you know, I... I understand you want to do that, and it's a mistake, but it's like I didn't make the mistake, but I feel like I have to pay for it, even if it's just that foot.
So can I answer her question? So the driveway is going to be exactly where the driveway to the existing house was? So if that's suitable to you, then that's exactly where it is?
So that your whole house is more in between three and five, Snow Drive?
It's almost equidistant between three and five. And the driveway, you can see the garage, the old blacktop is still there, is going to be exactly where the old driveway to the old house was. So I haven't moved it one way or the other, affecting... Hopefully, I'm not affecting you.
Well, for me, it, again, it's just that privacy. And I get it, at five, if I go upstairs and I look out one of the bedroom windows, I can see, you know, from, you know, from the house next door, because there are one floors. But there are houses that are two-story, um, Snow Drive. It's not just all ranches. And that was my biggest concern, is the privacy, because it's just who I am. I like my privacy. It's how I was raised. So that's all I have to say.
What's that? Yeah. Does anybody else speak in favor or against? I do have a letter that's from Ken and Martha Culver, that Two Forty-One Pocket Road. We own the property of Two Forty-One Pocket Road in Budley, Four Snow Drive, this is a four-third, this is a special permit to Mr. McKay. I guess that... The house isn't much different to where it was before, right?
No. It's pretty much the same location.
Yeah, it's pretty much the same.
It's shorter, left to right, but it's deeper, front to back. But not... Had I not made a mistake, it would have been encroaching on the front anymore. It's out the back of the house is where the depth comes from.
And I guess I don't... Is it not really two-story, though?
No, it's a one-story house.
It's a one-story house.
I have a two-story.
Oh, you have a two-story? Okay. So there was a house there before that you looked at, right? That's what I was just trying to... That's a tape, right? There was a house up there previously that would...
There was a ranch on the property before. He tore it down.
Right, right.
So I guess the question is, what's the difference between that ranch and this one-story?
I... There was nothing on the pictures that I could see that showed where the driveway was and where that driveway was going to be to my house.
The new driveway?
Yes. And where, you know, everything is, because there was a couple of different ways that I felt like, you know, is the driveway here, is it here, or is it over here?
So did his answer ease your concern about that? Or it's going right...
If it's in the same spot, I can handle that.
Okay.
It's going to be in the same spot, right?
Scott?
So the other thing is, you can see the front of the house is mostly all the garage.
Correct.
So we won't be looking at it.
If you're going to have a conversation, could you... Could she come to the mic, just so we can pick it up?
Sure.
For public record.
If you have any more questions, could you just approach the mic? So it sounds that the driveway is going to be pretty much in the same spot as it was before, and that, um... It just appears it's... There's been a house there before, and it's going to be a house there in a few. So I guess... It's not... I mean, I don't...
It sounds like because he made the house deeper, he's going to be spending more time in the back, towards the back of the house, and where he just pointed out that the front is all garage. I think privacy is going to be more in what he's building than what was there.
I'd personally like to look at the house from...
I just needed clarification, and I... That's why I came, because there was nothing, and all I got was this.
Oh, okay.
And I just wanted to...
Well, we want to make sure that what the information has come out has made you at ease with some of this, is what we're getting at.
I just want to make sure that, because, I mean, close... Like, my son and I measured. I mean, we're exactly fifty feet from the street to the front door. And so, you know, we think, you know, there's not a whole lot of space between the street and then your garage, and then going around, that wraparound is your house. I just... I didn't know what was there, and I just didn't want to have your front window right by my front door, or whatever.
No, that's...
And I just needed it, because you showed the sides, but you didn't show where that is for me. And that's what my concern was.
So as a point of reference, that bump out of the garage is forty-eight point six feet from the edge of the road. It's not from the lot line because of the right-of-way. So it's similar to what you have at your house.
Board, any more questions? Ready to close the public hearing? Yeah? Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Obviously, this is a special permit, and, um... Are there any conditions or anything?
No. Yeah.
So...
Measure twice.
What's that?
Measure twice.
No, not even twice. It's forever.
We talk about this, and every time something like this comes before us, thirty-eight point four feet.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you...
I would almost say, relax to thirty-six feet, just because, you know, if the framing gets up there, and he overhangs the sill too far on the front, then the severe is come out, and there's so many minor things like that, but that could totally follow up.
Make it thirty-eight, is it?
What'd you make of it?
What's that?
Thirty-six? I suggest thirty-six.
Okay. Is that power here we go?
That's a good idea.
All right. All right, so can I hear a motion to approve a special permit pursuant to sections 3.6.6 of the Westford zoning law, for after-the-fact approval of reconstruction of a non-conforming residential structure with a front yard setback of thirty-six feet, whereas thirty-nine point four five was previously approved and fifty-four is required? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.
So also.
So we have... Staff has fourteen days to file.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And now I'm going to turn this back over to Scott, right?
And we're seeing David.
What's that?
We'll be seeing David.
Oh, yes. So...
Just so...
David, I'd like to devote a mark. Have a good night, gentlemen.
You, too.
Okay. Does anybody have any new business, low business, no business? Typically, this month is the month that we reorganize the board, election of officers, and with staff, I decided to hold off on that in light of Jimmy's situation. So we're going to put that off to a meeting in the future. So everything will stay as quoted. Anybody else have anything to add? Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
I have to go with this.
Correspondents' reports? I think, did you do those already, Ben?
I'll make you just a for the board, that we put in your packet, but you don't have to like... You can look at it, but you don't have to throw it on it. It's just letting you know about thirty-seven... Concerned residents about thirty-seven powers.
Just a question. And I guess it's informal, but this is from a concerned owner. Seems to me, for the record, you ought to have proven this.
Yeah. It's anonymous.
I mean, because it's... You know, it's kind of derogative in some sense.
Is thirty-seven powers not owns property?
Yes.
Oh, what is that, a boss?
Planning board.
Oh, 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 oh.
Mr. Chair, it's currently going to the planning board, and it's going to be apartments that's... Western earth material is subject to ZB acquirings for the building apartments there.
And unfortunately, that's part of the MBTA housing law that we really have no control over, and it's, you know, we really have no input other than we want to condition things.
No, no, no. I understand all of that. All I'm thinking, and I don't have a solution, that if there's going to be a letter like that, it ought to come from somebody. that if, if there's going to be a letter like that, it ought to come from somebody.
I want you to make a note of that, Ben, and was it an email that was sent to you?
Um, it was an email that was sent to the zoning, uh, the planning board staffman, staff team.
Yeah.
That's how it was signed, that's what you're getting at.
Well, it went planning board, Board of Health, Conservation Commission, zoning board of appeal.
I think, I think Dave's point is, if you're going to write a letter, you should put it in there.
Right.
For Dave to see what it's going to say.
My opinion, I don't have a letter yet.
Right.
Yeah.
So why not sign your name? There's no letter yet.
So if you want some, I mean, you're really, truly opening up the town to a lot of criticism, but you don't know. Just like, it just doesn't seem right to me.
Is there an address or anything, nothing?
Yeah, we don't even know if it's a western resident.
Right, it could be someone from Littleton.
Yeah, 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 no, no, I, I haven't read yet.
If it comes from an email, how do you know what it is?
Yeah, two pages worth.
I think, I think the comments have been worthy of making a note and saying, you know, send an email back, or have someone send an email back, and say, listen, if you want anybody to pay attention to this, you're going to tell us where you are and who you are.
Yeah, the second point is that town shouldn't be circulating, yeah, my opinion.
Vinnie?
Kim. Uh, Jeff, I used, can we ask Jeff, just so, for, in case something, I don't want to say something I don't, for Jeff? Is Jeff still on the line?
So.
Jeff, are you there?
So, I'm, I'm here.
Jeff?
There's a, there's a letter that was in our packet anonymously complaining or stating things about Powers Road, not owns property. And it wasn't, there's, there's no name, no address, and so Dave brought up the point that, number one, we don't think that it should be submitted without someone knowing who it is and where they are. I mean, it could be an email from somebody in Littleton, we don't know. So, um, and Vinnie wanted to check something with you, he didn't want to say anything out of turn, go ahead, Vinnie.
I just want to make, I just want to see if, I just want to make sure that if I'm correct, that anonymous emails, I don't know how that would work with, how we sign town stuff.
So all I can say is that this letter, it was, I believe, hand-delivered physically to Town Hall, so there is no, it is completely anonymous, I know in the past when the board has received anonymous correspondence, they typically place little to no weight on that correspondence. But we don't feel as though we should decide whether you see it or not, so we usually divide it, and the board does whatever they do with it. Um, and usually they make comments like, we don't appreciate anonymous comments. But, and if you want, if you want to set policy for us that you don't want us to provide anonymous correspondence, you know, you can make that request, we just feel as though someone gave you something addressed to you, we're going to provide it, you can give it whatever weight you choose to give it or not.
Okay, Jeff, thank you. So what do, what do you guys feel, do you want to get anonymous stuff and then disregard it, or not have it submitted without someone on there? David, I know how you feel. Or anybody else?
I don't mind getting it, and let me decide if there's any weight to it or not, or if we need more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I don't mind getting it. I'm not going to give it much thought, because.
Unless something actually sticks out.
They can't put the name on it.
Yeah.
You can look at it, but I guess it doesn't figure into the C.
Right. Anybody have anything else? Okay, so do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.